Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Franklin Plan and Board. This is September 8, 2025 meeting. This is audio and video recorded as well as on Zoom. Zoom call in number is 312-626-6799. And the meeting call in number is 857-985-23948. Guess we'll go to general business first. If I could go to Amy for a brief review of Cottage Street 157.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this was approved for 157 Cottage Street on June 2, 2025. It's a change of use to develop a children's museum at the site. Most of the work is being done within the parking area and sidewalks and safety. There were a lot of outstanding items, but it's been noted that a lot of the items were to be done today. Beta has been out to the site and has provided a report in your packet.
Okay, good. Is Matt online?
He is online. We just need to give...
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Matt.
How you doing?
You there?
Right. So, yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. Thank you. I just didn't see you.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, yeah, I'm not sure. It doesn't look like there's video available at the moment to show me, but I will just continue with audio, if that's okay.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
So, we did go out to the site last week in conjunction with the applicant's request for the partial Form H. Essentially, you know, we confirmed that the outstanding items they had on the Form H were pretty consistent with what we saw out there. There were a few items that they had done with the understanding that they were going to continue to work right up until the meeting. So, we did have some staff go out to the site today. And on those items from the Form H, they did install the top course pavement. They have the parking space striping done. They have the walkways and ramps done. It does look like they may need to add detectable warnings to those eventually. The crosswalk is installed. Handicap signs and markings are done. All the signing is done. Volumes are in. One of the two locations on Cottage Street has been closed up of the existing driveway openings. They have one more to do, but right now it's, you know, it's constructed as a driveway, so you can still traverse it. Trees are installed, and they have the fence installed as well. So, really, all that's remaining is they still have to do a fair amount of general site cleanup, sweep in the parking lots. There's some construction debris around that they need to move out. Some of the concrete work was recently done, so they need to take the forms down, but all the walkways are installed. And we did notice that the roof leader at the northeast corner of the building is currently not connected to the drainage system. At least at this stage, I expect it's just going to run over the parking lot, into the catch basin, and wind up in the same spot. So, the drainage system should be effectively working. So, that is the overall for the site, and I'd be happy to answer any question that the board may have. The applicant may be able to provide better direction on the work that was done today.
Good. Thank you, Matt. Before I go to the board, I'd like to go to the applicant. If the applicant just introduce themselves for record, please, and maybe respond back to Matt from his previous site visit. What's your ETA trying to move into the building? What's the date?
They're looking forward to doing, they've been cutting on the 18th, so that'd be next. I'm sorry. That would be Wednesday. I'm sorry, the 17th. Opening on the 18th.
So you do have a little bit of time to correct what is being called out right now, then?
We do, yeah. A general, you know, just general debris of just cuts and just stuff that needs to be cleaned. Most of it was cleaned by the end of the day. Beta came by today around 2 o'clock, so all those forms and stuff were taken down and put away. So all that stuff will be cleaned in the next couple of days. But we do have time, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you. I did drive by, that's why I'm asking. I just saw some miscellaneous stuff and some... You're going to be able to at least get some loom down, potentially?
Our goal, honestly, is to be hydroseated and everything before the opening. So we're going to continue to work through the landscaping. I have on our sheet to, you know, kind of be towards the end of the month, but we're going to work right through it. So, if we're taking pictures there, it's going to be hydroseated and look like it's supposed to be.
Good, thank you. I'll go to the board. The board have any comments, questions? Jake? No? Chris?
No.
Mark?
My only question to the chair, I think you said that the concrete work is complete. Does that include the public sidewalk?
Yes. Good. Mike?
No comments.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to make sure that, can we just make sure the building commissioner does his one last two through prior to the opening with us releasing it a little bit early based on a little bit of work left to make sure everything's taken care of, please? Going to make a motion to approve partial Form H for 157 Cottage Street? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Yeah. We're going to, before we go to zoning amendments, let's go to, we're going to go to Panther Way, Senior Village, special permit site plan application. If I could go to Amy, please, Department of Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe most of the outstanding items have been satisfied per Beta's memo. They're going to work with DPW on the sidewalk for Panther Way, so there's no further comments.
Okay. Before I go to Beta, Mike, can I sue your thoughts off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last review, we had some comments on the different types of casket grave for the out slope in the main driveway. Some kinds of concerns about the drainage, the drainage report, how some of the data that they were using. And their last submission, those items were addressed.
Okay, so you're comfortable with them?
Yeah, we have no further comments on it. So they address the, they have been brought up in the past.
Okay, good. Is Gary on or Matt covering for Gary?
Gary is on. I believe it's on. Gary is on, yes.
Gary, you there?
Yes, I'm on. Yes, I am.
Hi, Gary. Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to see if we can get a rundown for Panther Way, what your comfort level is.
I'm pretty comfortable with what they've got. I mean, obviously, there's a few things that the board is going to have to, you know, look at. There's a couple discretionary issues that the board has to look at, you can see in the list in the letter. But as far as the technical issues, they have responded to everything, and I really don't have anything outstanding at this point.
Okay, good. Thank you, Gary. If I could just go to the applicant before I go to the board and the, in the audience, if you guys just want to introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Sure. Brad Chaffee, Kevor Property Group, applicant.
I'm Rick Goodrow with United Consultants.
So you're comfortable with everything with Gary and Mike and everybody else, right? Obviously, okay.
Yes.
Any comments? Or I'm going to go to the board next, so let me have some questions.
Yeah, obviously, the Beta had recommendations of some of the items we've discussed over the project sidewalks, trees, things of that nature that kind of now seem to be falling on the board to make a final decision. So we're here to discuss any of those items you may have questions on.
Okay, good. I'll go to Jen first. Jen, you have comments or questions?
Through the chair, my only question was, I appreciate you noting trees over 15 inches in diameter on the plan. What was the total quantity that you found? I'm sorry if I missed that on...
So, it's on the planting sheet, and it's 444 trees over 15 inches. And there's a breakdown of various types of trees.
I guess I would just wonder if, sorry, and what percentage of those trees are remaining versus which are being removed?
So those were the trees that we located, as we discussed, within the work area. So those are the trees. That's the number of trees that will be removed.
So I guess I just wonder what could officially be set aside or perhaps given back to the town in terms of any sort of tree bank, however we...
From somewhere else?
Yeah, determine. I just would like to see something in good faith to ensure that the town is trying to restore or protect habitat elsewhere. It cannot be maintained in this, that area of the site within reason.
Or amenable. So I just, I just don't have any, I guess, ideas, but, you know, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, in response to that, is it something that we can ask our tree warden to work with the applicant on to determine a sufficient amount of trees planted somewhere else with that being a good condition, perhaps?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Sounds good.
If the board, you know, others agree, but...
We've done this in the past.
A big tree person, so, yes, we have done it in the past, and I think it's important to...
But you just want to make sure they do get planted. That's my biggest thing. It may just go into hiding somewhere, but I just want to make sure that it still happens, that's all.
Yeah, absolutely.
In a way to track it, if Mike has a, you know, maybe put a date on it or something like that. By, you know, next year, the trees have to be planted somewhere, just so we know what happens, that's all. We've done this in the past. I don't think we've ever put dates on them, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think so. I know the, you know, the DPW director is also the tree warden, and with the Highway Superintendent is also the tree and park superintendent. They do a lot of tree planting throughout town. They have a, they have a whole program with that. I'm not sure exactly the timing or the extent of what they do, but I do know that there is a program in place that do that. As far as putting a time requirement when those trees have to be put in might be a little difficult because depending on where they have to go and the timing and everything. But I think the more, if they're going to, if it's a matter of providing some kind of contribution to that, you know, the tree fund or whatever's out there, I think once it's in the town's hands and it's in the account, it's the town tree warden will use that as needed, as, you know, to replace trees throughout town.
Yeah, maybe we have a curb list of every project that we've done it, so we know, you know, 10 trees from here. That way there, it's just not 200 trees in a batch of five different developers, that's all.
I could ask about that, say if there's a way to...
You know what I mean? So that way there, we can track it. So we can always ask and hear from now and say, hey, where are we with these? I think there's two or three others that we've already done like this. Whether those trees got planted or not, we don't know. It's just a way to track.
Annual program, so as far as what the town normally does in addition to the additional stuff we get from other applicants, I'm not sure if they aggregate, you know, separate those or not. But I can find out.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you. Does that help everybody? I think that's what you were trying to aim for.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it's less about timing and more about making sure that ultimately the environmental impact is restored over time.
Sure.
That's all, the habitat.
Okay, you good?
Yeah.
Matt?
I think that the comments have been addressed.
Okay, Jake?
I'm good.
Chris?
No comments, Mr. Chairman. No? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question in regards to the easement that's being requested with Highwood. What if that does not happen? Is there a Plan B?
Well, what has to happen is we have to create the lot through an A&R plan. And through that A&R plan, we would provide the appropriate easements for the stormwater system, which will be shared by both properties, both lots, once the division of land is completed. Additionally, there'll be a sewer easement on the existing building lot once created. There is currently an easement agreement between one of the property owners that owns a small lot to the, to the Highwood end of the property. So there is already an easement agreement in place that needs to be modified. So what we had requested was that that would be a condition of approval prior to endorsement. We'll come back with the A&R plan and the easement agreements, so that the board would have an opportunity to look at them before we sought endorsement.
That answers my question, right? I don't recall, was there any discussion about the repaving, repaving of Panther Way?
I have my notes, some kind of, some kind of bond prior to signing.
And my last one was, any, any question or any determination on the commercial space? What is it going to be?
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Not yet. So we, we don't have a tenant, and we were going to work our way to the top of the site and come down. So obviously, we can come back to the board for approval of who that tenant would be. We just don't...
I would like that, just, just at least so we know, so make sure everything fits within, within the site, based on what you designed, too.
Yep.
We can make that as one of the conditions.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Brad, based upon what you've just said, you know, you're going to start at one end and work your way. Are you planning on then on phasing this development, and how long do you anticipate construction lasting to impact the boroughs?
So, I guess, our goal is about, I'd say, start to finish kind of two and a half years, right? Just the size development of this. We're going to come in, put the road in, take six months, do site work, and then start building houses and kind of work our way out. So, it'll be, you know, occupied faster than that. I would assume, like, you know, something is, like our condo projects, mixed-use building, where you might have, you know, all the houses past the mixed-use building that are occupied, the mixed-use building is up, there might be drywall going on, so it looks finished. It just, that section wouldn't be. So I necessarily wouldn't call it phased, but it will be phased naturally, just, you know, in that way, but it'll look, look completed. But that's usually our timeframe, just start to finish.
I guess my question was more related to, like, I don't want to see you do a section of the development, and then five years from now, you decide you're going to finish it, get it done.
Yeah, we, yes, and it's sensitive to geography and everything. Working our way out is just the easiest way to do that. So yes, that's our, that's our campaign.
Progression of how this kind of development will happen, I understand. I just didn't want to see it prolonged more than needed.
Absolutely not, so.
Sorry, just to follow up on the tenant situation, I mean, the parking they're providing is the worst case scenario parking. So personally, I don't feel strongly that they need to come back to tell us who their tenants are going to be, because they're providing for worst case scenario.
Exactly.
So I don't necessarily think that needs to be addressed. I mean, it's a commercial space. It's a mixed-use, you know, facility, the layout, the site, which has been reviewed to be able to accommodate that, especially with my two cents.
Yeah, I get it, but I just want to make sure that it fits. Say it's, yeah, say something comes back, then reply it morning.
But it won't, because it's a worst case. It's a lot of...
Well, you know, but no.
What if it's something that, instead of having to appear before a public meeting or general business, or a memo to Amy that she can review and give the thumbs up on, or...
I would, yeah.
I just don't want to overcomplicate it.
No, no, we just want to make sure what goes in is what, what's being, we were told, that's all.
An administrative approval unless the planner or engineers feel as though it's going to exceed what was approved.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
If we can do it that way, too.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The only real comment, the last comment I had is, thank you for the ads built for the design for the retaining walls. Want to make sure, make sure that's part of the packet for the plans for Beta as well. And the last one would be, I want to make sure we can get some kind of bond for a chunk of that Panther Way from, between Mike and Gary, determine a number, because the amount of trucks coming out, they're going to tear up that road. So I want to make sure before we sign off on this, we get some kind of bond established for that. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, just a question on that. So you're looking for a, I mean, any work they're doing right away as far as constructing the sidewalk that goes up the highway, that's, will be done on a DPW permit, and they'll have to bond that work there. If you're looking for something else, I just want to be clear, what is you're looking for?
Basically, from the entrance, from the trap rock out, heading towards, like Vendetti's and Harwood Street. Was that Harwood Street? What's that side street?
Edward.
Edward, Edward Street. Based on the amount of gravel that's coming out of it, the trailer's going to rip it up. So I want to make sure that the town's protected, and we're not paying for a road that we didn't destroy, so.
A bond, a bond in places to make sure nothing, that has something...
And if something comes back, we have money in an account to have it repaired, or they can repair it, whichever way. I just want to make sure. There's quite a bit of gravel coming out of it. So just want to make sure we can protect the town that way, that's all.
Mike, what's the current PCI on that road?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's...
Probably 45?
I'm guessing somewhere around 50 or so, but it's, it's worn. I don't know if it's necessarily ready for reclaim yet, but it's on its way.
It's close.
There's some areas that are really bad with this. Definitely some...
And there's some bad, and there's some drainage problems over there, too. That's why, you know...
Some flatter spots there, but, yeah. If we were to repave the road, we'd have to look into, add a couple basins, maybe.
Yeah. And, and I'm not saying he owns the basins, but I just want to make sure we have enough money to take care of the road itself.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
If PCI 40, let's make sure it's reflective of reality.
All right. Anybody in the audience? Comments, questions? Anybody on Zoom? No? All right. So I make a motion to close Panther Way Senior Village overlay. Public hearing, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll vote on the next one. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to... All right, we just go to our next public hearing, which is for Forge Parkway Lot 2. This is a new site plan. Make a motion to waive the reading. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this will be a brief overview for everybody. I know it's an initial hearing, so I just want to make sure everybody hears, and we can comment on it as well. But if we can go to Amy at Department of Planning, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is actually located at Forge Park. It's currently a vacant lot located in the business zoning district. I had originally said industrial, but it's actually part of the business zoning district. They're proposing to construct a warehouse building, including office space with the stormwater and utility connections. They have filed for conservation and had their first meeting last week with them, and Beta has provided a review letter. There are three waivers, which I've listed, and they're listed on the site plans they are requesting. A few comments is providing an area for the snow storage and then for the warehouse, as well as where is the trucks loading and unloading. I also want to note that we did receive a letter from the fire department.
Good, thank you. Before I go to the board, if I could just have you guys introduce yourselves for record, if you have an idea tonight?
Usually don't get this much attention.
Yeah. Still Brad Chaffee, still Rick Goodrow here.
Still.
Still. Thought we were going to rename this meeting for Brad.
Your seats, big guy.
And your name as young man?
Mike, I'll go to you for a quick review, if you don't mind, please.
So it's, we took a quick look at the site plans I was submitting. We just had a couple of initial comments, just generic about what DPW permits were required for this type of work. And just, you noticed on the, there's three retaining walls proposed on the site. At the most, the height ranges from 10 to 15 feet. One concern is just two of the walls are right adjacent to the railroad. So it'd be nice to see some kind of design to verify that they can design these to be able to construct them without doing any tiebacks onto the railroad property to make sure they're designed not just for H20 truck traffic, but also train ratings, too. So just something to make sure that that design's taken into account.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you. I'm going to go, before I go to the board, I'll go to Gary. Gary, you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Hi, Gary. If you could give us a brief overview of what you've come up with so far?
A couple of things. A couple of things in terms of the interpretation. Number one is the side yard setback on the, on the building relative to the rail. If you look at it, I'm not sure if the description under the bylaws applies to this site, and I'm going to leave this to Amy and Town Council, but it's not quite specific. I think it's a little gray whether or not they can utilize that zero setback on the rail siding, specifically because of the business zone. Number two, the issue associated with the setback from the frontage along Forge Parkway, the aisle, the access aisle to the front parking is less than 10 feet from the, from the front, from the right way, which is not allowed under the bylaws. There is a traffic issue, and I believe Dennis is online here, in that the access into this is on the northbound side of Forge Parkway, and unfortunately, there's not a cut in the median to allow them access to the southbound side. I, I'm not a traffic guy, so I'm hoping Dennis will have the ability to be able to respond to that, but I just raised it as a question. The other issue I had was, they're going to have to rearrange or reconfigure their stormwater to maintain the setback from the ones. Other than that, they do have that, it's a little oddball. They have one lone parking space at the far end of the building to meet their 26. It's just kind of out there. It's just a little odd. There's nothing wrong with it, but it is a little odd. If you see it, Greg, it's in the, it's in the fire, it's in the back right corner of the lot. There's one, there's one space back there. Other than that...
Gary, that's your spot.
It's Brad's spot.
That's Brad's spot. Well, well, thank you. Is Dennis on? Dennis, are you there?
Hi, I am. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi, Dennis. If you could give us an update of what you, what you think about the entry with the meeting?
Right, right. No, thank you. So, looking at it, you know, Gary asked me to take just a quick look. First and foremost, I think this is probably noted somewhere, but there's a stone wall right at the driveway, assuming that they're well aware of that. You know, that section would obviously have to be removed. With regard to the, the access to the site, not necessarily a critical concern or something that would, would, would result or require the removal of the median, but just, I think, some understanding of how vehicles would be traveling, particularly larger vehicles, delivery vehicles, trucks, to the site, just sort of an understanding of what the circulation or the route, just to, just to kind of generally understand, you know, how, how that, that, that travel route would, would work, and just making sure that that, that wouldn't be an issue. I don't think it would be. And this, I think, are, you know, just the answer to this question, sometime, and I think looking at the adjacent land use, there is no vehicle research, but sometimes when a roadway is referred to as a parkway, usually you see the center landscape median, and sometimes that comes with a restriction on the vehicles that can use the parkway. I'm guessing this is really just a name only, that doesn't apply. And again, looking at the sort of surrounding and adjacent land use, I anticipate that's not the case here. But just, just to sort of clarify, and I think that's, that's maybe more of a question for the town. And then, other than that, yeah, nothing too critical, but like I said, just some understanding with, with, with this type of site, how the vehicles, particularly larger vehicles, trucks, would be expected to travel to and from. I anticipate most, if not all, it'd be come... I anticipate most, if not all, coming from four ninety-five to the east. And if they would just continue on one forty, come off Forge Parkway, but then when they exit, they obviously have to make a right. And it looks like it's pretty straightforward, but if that's the plan, then, you know, I don't think there's anything too critical about not having an opening.
Okay, good.
That was really it.
Okay, good. Thank you, Dennis. I guess I'll go to the board. Oh, yeah, sure.
Sure. So.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
I've seen you guys all night, you know.
That's what I was going to say.
Previous.
Just bring it on.
Just never left.
We were hoping it would go as well as the first one, but apparently not.
Well, now you're up to the plate.
All right. So as mentioned, project's located at Lot Two Forge Parkway, which is at the intersection of West Central Street, Forge Parkway. Forge Parkway was created back in the nineties as an industrial-type subdivision. So Brad has entered into an agreement to purchase this, looking to move his headquarters there and provide some additional rental space for the property. The proposal is to construct an eleven thousand, two hundred square foot footprint building, two-story, two-story office located to the front of four thousand square feet, about ninety-two hundred square feet for, excuse me, a basic warehouse-type use, storage of, of products for Brad's business. We have calculated out the need for the office space and warehouse to have twenty-six parking spaces. The space to the rear, we do acknowledge is somewhat unique, but it would be for someone in the warehouse end of the building, if you will. So that's why we had provided a space back there. The building will be connected to the town sewer and water services. We do have an onsite stormwater system proposed, which consists of four catch basin-type water quality units, which ultimately directed towards an underground infiltration system. We have, as mentioned, been before the Conservation Commission. We have received peer review comments from both MAST, DEP, and BETA. We are looking, having the wetlands people look at some of the flagging that was questioned. Once final adjustments are made with respect to the flagging, we will be looking, making some slight adjustments to the stormwater system. As mentioned by both the town engineer and BETA, there are three proposed retaining walls. We have the structural engineers looking at providing final design plans for the retaining walls. We'll have those available in the future for review, submission and review if necessary. So we're aware that the board is now looking for that. These are substantial walls. We understand that. So Brad's having that, that taken care of. So with respect to two of the comments that Gary made, first, with respect to the building situated next to the rail line, Gary has suggested, maybe Amy, the town's attorney. Our position was that the bylaw indicates that if we're in, if property is located in an industrial area, not a zone, that it could be eligible for that reduction. We feel it being within the industrial park itself, that we would be within that industrial zone. So the appearance is that they've created this business zone north of the railroad, between the railroad and the old Route one forty, West Central Street. So we're right on the edge of that. We're within the industrial park, so we thought it was a reasonable position to take, to position the building. You know, additionally, as you can well see, it's a tight site, substantial retaining walls. So we were trying to, you know, be able to fit the building in and. So that was the reason for that. We'd be certainly happy to work with Amy and the town attorney, building commissioner, to get final determination on that. And then I would like to point out that the parking area located between the building and Forge Parkway, the parking spaces are at the building themselves. So the turnaround area, the driveway, if you will, the twenty-four-foot aisle is what's within that ten-foot area. So we were looking at the parking areas where the vehicles would be parked, to be prohibited, not the twenty-four-foot aisle. So we, you know, hoping the board feels the same way as we do on that. And I think that basically is a summary of the project, how we came to where we are. We do have letters from the town planner, from the town engineer, from BETA for both planning and conservation, DEP and the fire, fire department. And we did, Brad and I did meet with the fire department, although it did not make it. In his letter, he did request the second fire hydrant to the northeast corner of the building. We settled on something in the vicinity of the door that's located about two-thirds of the way from the front towards the back of the building and that little island for a fire hydrant. And Deputy Chief Bobby Ari was happy with that. So we will add that to the plans moving forward. But as far as the circulation and fire department access, you've seen the letter. He seems to be satisfied. So we're going to talk with the traffic people, try and come up with typical traffic letter that we've been doing lately to give the board an idea on some of the site access and truck entrances and routes through the site, entering and exiting the site, things of that nature. So we kind of have our marching orders, and we just wanted to come in tonight and give an overview to the board and see what the board themselves had to say. If there are any questions or comments, we'd be happy to take them in and hopefully get them resolved.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go to Mark first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question as far as size of trucks, big trucks. Is there enough for that to turn around, or is that, is there just maybe box trucks?
For, you know, for, I guess for my, for my business, it's going, you know, would be occupying the majority of this. It's, it's mostly box trucks or, you know. If there's a trailer that were to come in there or something, it would be a one-off. Most of the stuff that we have delivered like that would go to a site, you know, we're not going to. So it's, it's mostly our own kind of vehicles, vans, things like that. Yeah.
I don't know the measurements, but it would look tight if a big truck went in there.
Yeah, there's about, on one side, there's about a hundred and twenty-five feet, there's a hundred on that. So I, I built it as big as I could so that it would be as comfortable as possible, just to have room back there. And that's why, I mean, other than the one parking spot, it's open, just to be able to at least have that. But yeah, it would be, I guess, tough for, you know, a huge tractor trailer to give it in.
All right, thank you. That's all. That's all I have.
Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick thoughts. I know the divided road is a question, and maybe this is a question for Mike through the chair. What, what does it take to get a cut? Because I know the medical office building that's right up the street has a cut. How would these, could these guys get a cut? Is it possible or no?
Through the chair, yes, they just have to file a permit with DPW, right-of-way excavation. That's what happened when the other development went in there. They applied through the DPW, and we permitted that cut. And I don't see any issues with here. If they needed that cut, file a permit.
That'd be ideal.
Go through the necessary paperwork, and we'll inspect that. I think that'd be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great.
Let's see, that's that there. It's close enough. I don't see anything on the plan. I'm assuming there has no been historic, like rail spur thought for the property, and there's no rail spur planned?
No.
Okay. And then I think this just came up on one of our other applications up on Union Street. The overhead doors are sixteen feet high.
Okay.
Is that what it says on the plan?
Yeah.
So that's.
Wide.
Oh, that's wide, okay. Dude, what's the height of it? Because other concern is vehicles driving in.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, I'll probably make them tall, just because I have vans that have ladders and sometimes something goes in. So they'll probably be ten feet or twelve feet tall, just so no one hits them.
Okay. Just ensuring that there's the appropriate drainage and protections and things like that.
Absolutely, yeah. Our intent is not to bring in, you know, tractor trailer, back it in or something like that. But yeah, we'll have an oil water separator, which is on the plan.
We are proposing an oil-water separator for the floor drain connections into, and then the ultimate discharge into the town stormwater system. We've done these in the past with the DPW. And we do have it shown on the plan. We do have a detail of the, of the separator on the plan as well.
Great.
So we're aware of that, but thank you for pointing it out.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. I only got two things, and I'm just going to parrot Gary, but I just kind of wanted to see the traffic stuff, like the stopping site distance.
Yep.
There is a little bit of pitch on the road there, so obviously that matters. If you guys are going to mess with the opening, if you can include that in your analysis, Gary had mentioned it.
Good.
Yeah, I think Gary's letter is pretty thorough, and the comments that he's asked for to be addressed, I don't disagree with the traffic. As far as the interpretation of what our setbacks are, I think that's confirming with our town attorney, engineer, planner that what you're interpreting is what they interpret it, and we're good. It's a little bit far beyond my ability to say what I think on that one, so. But yeah, otherwise, I, I don't think this is super complicated, but there are some issues that I'd like to see addressed from Gary's letter.
Good. John?
Couple questions. Who's the chair? Firstly, I don't care about setbacks for your own personal benefit. Be close to the railroad grade, the attorney agrees that that's acceptable, fine. I mean, you're against the railroad. My question, though, is are you within the MBTA zone of influence of thirty feet of their property line? Because if so, I don't know if you've ever done a project with MBTA, but it would be a complete nightmare, so just a heads up. They, it requires getting a license, and they have complete oversight over all of the construction and the permitting process. So it can be a real pain for you, so just.
Doesn't sound fun.
No, and CSX, I think, CSX, I don't know, there's MBTA in their CSX. If CSX actually owns it, they also have their own stipulation of oversight within like twenty-five feet of the, like, the rail itself. So I don't know.
I was hoping that was that, because the rail is very pushed, it's probably over thirty feet from the line into that.
Could be the right-of-way.
Into that area, yeah.
Yeah, but the MBTA is clearly thirty feet from the property line, considered as a zone of influence. So if it's parking and driveway, you're fine, but as soon as you start to go vertical, just as a heads up, in case it may influence how you consider laying out on the site to make your life easier. My other question is, this is a business district, and obviously office is allowed by, by right. But what's not allowed is storage of contractor materials. And I, I need to probably look a little closer at storage, but I'm just wondering if anything requires either A, isn't allowed, and you may want to consider a spot zoning change, depending on what you're trying to do in this facility and its location relative to industrial versus like business. But just looking at the used regulation chart, if you could just clarify what you're intending to use this for is allowed by right by the business zoning district?
Sure. So under the business, there is an accessory use for contractor yard. The way I see the use group of contractor yard is just that, like if I sold pallets of stuff and I stored stuff outside. I really don't have that type of a business. I do want to have a garage space so I can keep stuff inside, just so. If I have my vans, or if I have a truck and I want to park in there, if we go out, you know, in the winter and it's salt all over the thing, and I want to wash it down. What, you know, whatever it may be that's inside, I don't have any intent of storing stuff outside. You know, I'm not selling anything outside, I'm not doing that. Primary in our business, honestly, project managers, site supers, estimators, you know, we have a few people that are in the field that self-perform some work, but we're not a trade. So I'm not, you know, I'm not, I don't have plumbing pipe everywhere. I don't have piles of, you know, electrical wire everywhere. So we do have some equipment and stuff, and a lift here and there and stuff that we just generally bring or rent to bring back and do. So we have, you know, an excavator that's usually on a site that might come back. That, that's my intent here. So what we looked at this would be having our office for the construction side of our business there. Any ancillary stuff that we have with that for the job, that's what we would use the actual, you know, warehousing spot for. And from what I saw, that was allowed in there. But I think the spirit of like a contractor yard is really not what I'm trying to do.
Okay, I just wanted clarification, because certain things are harder.
Yeah, no, it's. Agreed.
I just didn't know, depending on what you were intending to do.
Yeah, it's.
Attempting to be a separate zone would be to your benefit, but probably not worth the tape. So that's all I have for now, but look into the.
Absolutely.
I think they ran into that when they, Mr. Marini built uptown at the railroad tracks.
Yes, I'm dealing with it right now.
I dealt with it thirty years ago. Have fun. I don't mean to be, but.
I could answer.
We want to like flip your site. I know you're dealing with stormwater, you're dealing with all kinds of.
It's a tough site.
But once you go vertical, that's where they, in the zone, and I forget what the distance is, but it's fairly, it's fairly close, yeah.
Well, we're certainly going to look into it. That could answer the building close to the railroad.
That means you're shrinking your building down five thousand square feet, so those are the garages, yeah.
I can tell you right now, the building will not be square. If that's the case, there will be a corner that is cut off in the back.
So I, a lot of people hit everything that I had for notes. The front entry was a little bit of a concern for me, but I know Dennis was looking at it and Gary. Truck turning. I did have a question about the sixteen-foot overhead doors. I didn't know if that was height or width, that's all, you know. Retaining walls, is that particular, I don't know if it's just a blurb, and is the retaining wall actually adjoining the building in the back corner? Is it, is it potted building structure or just independent, but just touching it? Okay. Yeah, it's a tight site. Was this the last lot in the subdivision? Was this considered a piece of raw land that was left behind, or was this one of the lots of the subdivision?
It's one of the lots.
It is actually one of the lots that was left, okay. Better remember if there was any left up there.
Yeah, there's a couple. They're not great.
Yeah.
There's not many, there's not many lots that are great these days, so.
Yeah. Sure.
Brad, you noted that you're going to be putting your main headquarters in this building.
Yeah, I'm going to take, yes, and I would, I would like to split, split the building to have a tenant. I'm not exactly sure with that, but I would take up the majority of this building, for sure.
I think it just relates to your current location is in your building downtown.
Yeah, so what we do, if I may, what we do after, on that, is we do all our leasing, we do a lot of sales out of there. We do a lot of property maintenance out of there. So it's very different. That office is just very much a customer-facing, so we have, you know, we're selling condos or Pantherway. It's a great spot for them. This will really be a professional construction office.
But that office is staying?
That would stay. It's a much smaller place. We're growing. We just need more kind of.
That's all I wanted to go with, that you're staying downtown, and this is in addition to what you.
Absolutely. Yes, we spent a lot of money to make that office nice, so.
It'd be a shame for you to move out of there.
Yeah, nope, we're just going to kind of divide and conquer a little bit in some areas, so.
Yeah, I didn't have much more. A lot of people touched upon one of my questions. So question, Amy, timing?
Yeah, I just wanted, there are some people on Zoom, if we want to take any public comment.
There are?
Just have them raise their hand if they would like to make any comments.
I do not see anything on Zoom.
There's a few names listed right there. No one's raised their hand, okay. I just, I wanted to see that. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Does anybody on Zoom have any comments or questions? No.
No, we don't. So the, I have to write it down, I believe is going to be, if we go out a month, then.
I can bring some more.
It will be October sixth.
October sixth?
Yeah.
I'll work on the rendering, too. I just had something kind of just to show some colors, but I'll actually formally submit at the next meeting. Just so you guys can visually see the walls and everything, too.
Thank you.
Okay, make a motion to continue Forge Parkway Lot Two to, what, October sixth?
Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time tonight.
Thank you. You guys can't leave. You have to stay for the rest of your night. You may as well.
He's doing the zoning proposals. I'm just watching.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, good night. All right. A last item of business for the night. This would be for zoning bylaw amendments, twenty-five dash nine-two-nine through twenty-five dash nine-three-four. This is for the. twenty-five dash nine-two-nine through twenty-five dash nine-three-four, this is for the crossing neighborhood. If I could go to Amy, Department of Planning, please.
Take a motion till we have a public hearing.
Whoop, sorry, yep.
Second reading.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a proposal to create an actual new zoning district being referred to as the Crossing Neighborhood District. The new zoning district would include all parcels along in their Union Street between East Street and Washington Streets that are currently within the Commercial One zoning district. As well has twelve additional parcels just to the north and south of the Commercial One parcels. I just want to note the reason for adding the additional twelve parcels is due to their current use, their current use is a more commercial use at this time. It doesn't affect their current businesses as they use them now. There's, as noted, there's six zoning bylaws that goes with this, just because of the extent of our zoning bylaw book that we need to make sure we incorporate every section that applies to this where referred to has Commercial One in those parcels that is now becomes a new district that we add to the cross, has the Crossing Neighborhood. So tonight would be, if the board chooses, would be a referral to the Town Council. I believe they haven't planned for our first reading on the seventeenth. The board needs more time, they're more than welcome to have more time, then Town Council has to do two readings for the zoning to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. I guess I'll go to the board first. Comments, questions? I'll start with Jen.
I mean, honestly, I'm, I think this is, is great, I. One question I have is, this isn't proposing removing any zoning districts or in lieu of any zoning district types.
No.
Is it right to share? So I guess it's great that we're starting to make recommended changes based on the updates to the master plan. I know one of those is also to try to simplify and reduce zoning districts, so I just want to make sure our map doesn't get like even more colorful than it needs to be. I'm wondering if you could quickly highlight, perhaps for the audience more than anybody, the differences, or the most notable differences between this new proposed zoning district, what it may enable or allow compared to Commercial One, what it used to be. Because many of the allowed uses are the same, almost identical, so is, is it more about setbacks and residential opportunity? If you could just maybe share on a really high level, I think it'd be beneficial. I guess there's not that many people online anymore.
Should we be more showing the map? Would it be worth showing the map?
Yeah, I mean, we could show the map, but I just.
Would it be easier?
So people understand that at a very high level wasn't.
So really, we took the, we took the existing Commercial One zoning district and took everything from that, kept it the same and created the Crossing Neighborhood District. However, one of the biggest changes that we did make is on, in the setback schedule, which is one-eighty-five Attachment Nine. In that schedule for the setbacks, we gave the Crossing Neighborhood the same setbacks as Downtown Commercial as opposed to Commercial One. So that's really the biggest change with this Crossing Neighborhood from what they have now. The, I'll note that the Downtown Commercial setbacks are a little bit more generous than Commercial One, not a huge difference, but there's a little bit more, I think there's like just one or two changes that's a little, little bit easier for those setbacks. So mainly the district with its current zoning is staying the same except for the one-eighty-five Attachment Nine schedule.
I just want to clarify that because what I'm seeing in that attachment has all the same numbers as a Commercial One versus the same as Downtown Commercial. Am I looking at the wrong chart? Is page?
One-eighty-five Attachment Nine?
Yeah, page twenty of the PDF. The Crossing Neighborhood, the proposed changes in this have all the same dimensions as Commercial One, which I thought the intent was to have the same dimensions as Downtown Commercial.
So the two differences are your minimum yard dimensions, front and side.
I'm seeing front is twenty and side is ten, rear is fifteen, where Downtown Commercial is five, zero, and fifteen.
Do you have, I have five and zero.
No.
Oh.
No, we have twenty, ten, and fifteen.
So that's why I was really confused because I wasn't really seeing any.
No, no, for Crossing Neighborhood, I have five and zero.
Yeah, we don't have that.
Oh. I apologize. Cause I'm sorry, it is in this one here, that must have been, been a last minute change.
What's the difference?
So, so the only difference, so the difference is going to be, and I'm sorry, I do have a draft here, is.
So could you start from the, the start with the Commercial, Crossing Neighborhood, just start from the area that's proposed, five thousand?
Yep, five thousand, fifty feet front edge, fifty depth, forty-five lot width, five per front, zero per side, fifteen for rear, three for stories, forty for feet, eighty for structures, and ninety for structures plus paving.
Are there any, sorry, are there any footnotes to that?
Yes, yeah, so the footnotes that you see, sorry, I can elaborate on that. So the footnote for the front is ten, has Downtown Commercial, footnote for the side is two, has Downtown Commercial, is as well.
Which has to do with maintaining a five-foot setback on the first floor at street level, whereas upper floors can overhang the required first floor setback.
Yes.
And that when abutting a residential district, the side yard must be maintained at twenty feet.
Can I ask clarification on that? So the side yard requires twenty feet of abutting a residential district. Is it a abutting to the rear or abutting to the side? Cause if it's a abutting to the rear, the side setback doesn't make sense.
It's current, currently appears to side, cause the footnote's with the side.
The rear's fifteen no matter what, and there's no exception for residential abutment.
It just, it just seemed to me that, I understand it's underneath the side, but it just says residential district, so if you read it and don't fully understand it, it abuts, maybe it abuts two, something.
It's beside, I think how this came about, well, cause like with Downtown Commercial, you could have a commercial building and then a house next to it.
Right.
So when that commercial building is a button, the residential is gonna be the twenty.
You gotta have the twenty, right.
Yes.
One, sorry, I'm assuming it's still kind of my, I'm just gonna keep talking. One thing I don't necessarily agree with in this particular part of town is there is also a footnote that says buildings up to fifty feet in height may be permitted by special permit from the planning board, provided the structure is setback at least fifteen feet from the front edge. I guess I am just a little concerned in this part of town in particular, if buildings start to get too high considering the adjacent, or the abutting properties of the context of the neighborhood.
We didn't include that footnote.
Oh, you didn't? Okay, so that's different.
I know, I'm sorry, I didn't hear with me.
Yeah, you said anything in Downtown Commercial, so I'm just going to go with that.
The only two footnotes were from the front and the side.
Okay.
We did not include that footnote with the feet.
Okay.
Which is what, where?
So that would have been stories high allowed and.
It would have been footnote number nine that Downtown Commercial has, but it's not included with the Crossing Neighborhood.
Right, but this says, ours footnote says fifteen and there's no fifteen.
Yeah, so I think what we're hearing is what we have promised is totally wrong. So maybe.
Yeah, so maybe that's, yeah, it's just those.
Yeah.
Can I get a few comments out though, so we are tackling it, we can just address those?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
No, 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 that was, mostly I was like really confused by trying to understand the difference of Commercial One when there wasn't really a difference between Commercial One. I think it's great if we're trying to get more pedestrian-friendly scale in the Crossing Neighborhood and bringing properties closer to street front and, you know, doing a lot of things that Downtown Commercial is trying to do. That's all. All good.
Yeah, Beth?
Yeah. So, so Jen, great comments, thank you for that, finding that. Great, helpful. My comments are more pertaining to the uses that are going to be allowed by right versus those that are requiring a special permit. So one or a couple that stand out to me in particular are, just gonna. Under the industrial utility, that a bus and railroad stations are allowed by right. However.
Sorry, Beth, yours says yes on that? Mine says special permit.
Am I reading it wrong? Permitted as of right.
On the actual use chart.
Three point one?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it says, special permit.
I don't have that.
Yep, that's what we.
Yours says yes?
Nope, mine says P slash S P, permitted as of right, is special permit from the Board of Appeals is required if the proposal project results in an increase in estimated water consumption, so it's allowed by right, does not require a permit. However, with that being said, I question the intent of this district is to encourage diverse mixed-use economically-cultural rich district. However, you know, in entertainment uses, when it's light industrial, but we are requiring a brewery, distillery, or winery to get a special permit. So that confuses me, like, go ahead and put in a railroad station, but if you want a brewery, you gotta put in the ring or a special permit. So I'm not, that doesn't make sense to me, especially I realize that in this area, there's a limited area in which you could probably put a bus station or a railroad station. However, I don't think just saying, sure, no problem, no limited ability to say no or put restrictions on any of that is logical to me. Well, you're requiring a brewery to come in for a special permit when you want to encourage those kind of uses. So I would like to see a little bit more oversight on a bus and railroad station and perhaps lighten up on the requirements for a brewery. Maybe make it specific to how close to a residential zone it is or abutting residential property, I don't know, I think it needs a little bit more thought. And just kind of, I guess, maybe looking at a few of the other uses that need a special permit versus as of right if you're trying to encourage more economically-friendly area for uses that are entertainment, residential, commercial, cultural.
Yeah, like didn't, didn't restaurant also like? I guess that comes down to water consumption again, but. Yeah, those are all good points, Beth, I agree. And I do wonder, that's a good point, within these types of zoning districts when really it's only if you're in a but or two, a resident, maybe that's a footnote.
Yeah, right.
At that, I mean, at that point, you have to go in front of planning board or, you know. But otherwise, why not let that be allowed by right unless there's some absurd water uses or something?
That's what I mean. I don't understand why you're trying to restrict that use versus plus a railroad station.
Right, right.
You know, kind of the same for, what else did I have? The Garden Center is required, it's a special permit. Just that, just to make your turn of thought, that's all. That's what I have right now until we see the other comments.
Okay, good. Jay?
Well, I'll let Beth have to say. That's about it. Yep. Okay. Chris?
Uh, no, I think it's a good step. I think the parking reduction is nice to, to entice better development. So one and one instead of one and a half, so I think that's good. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Mark?
No, I think this is also a good step. The only thing I would like to see is if the commercial space would be a percentage of, of these total square footage of the development of property, whether it be ten percent, fifteen percent.
Same as a minimum commercial space for a mixed-use building?
Yeah.
Is that what you said? Okay.
Yeah, I was even thinking a little bit more to encourage.
Yeah, try to encourage small businesses to come in, you know, we have a couple of places here that have storage closets and I don't think.
Yeah, four or five hundred.
Encourage that.
Yeah, yeah, four or five hundred square feet is not encouraging somebody to try to open up shop for a little business to start, per se. I'd like to see it myself, I had that in one of my notes too marked, just a, you know, fifteen percent minimum. If you're gonna encourage a little zone down here, a little village, you don't want just all residential units. You want a mixed use so you can actually not have this, you know, leave the village, per se, to go somewhere and get something, per se, you know.
I think it benefits the applicant more than it does the town and the residents that live in that.
And where the mill store is gonna be coming online in a few years where they're working their way through, it'll be an extension of that, per se, so you'll create a nice little zone down there. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 likewise, I didn't mean to step on your act to do as you.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate it.
On that, just on that topic, I think it is important to not only look at a percentage square footage, but in terms of what the meaningful street front presence is, and I feel strongly that every parcel is unique. You don't want retail, you know, three thousand per feet, but it's in the back of the building.
Correct.
To me, it's all about the linear footage as a percentage of the visible street front, front yard, linear footage total of the facility. Yeah, like, like ninety percent of that linear footage should be visible retail street front. And then, you know, sure, you're meeting some percent behind it, but it's about activating the pedestrian-friendly neighborhood.
And making it more foot-traffic friendly is, is part of it was another piece of the puzzle too. And I think Beth and Jen hit a lot on the same comments really, so I think it's a good step forward. Amy, is there a way to get the revised stuff with some of the comments, maybe, as part of this?
Yeah, so that one page is that Attachment Nine, which I actually have here already revised. Has Far has made in the changes with the railroad, the Garden Center, and Commercial Space, it would be a recommendation to the planning board, it wouldn't be an actual change.
Town Council.
I mean, Town Council, yeah. I wouldn't, because it's been posted, has this, so we, so the plan of order would make the recommendation to the Town Council to make those changes.
Could, could we get the updated charts though?
Yeah, just one page, yes, yes.
And then we can work from there and then make our recommendation after, after our next meeting, with that being said. We threw it a team bit more, if that makes sense. I think, I mean, now's the time to, now's the time to speak up or further hold your peace, I guess, at this point. If we're trying to bring some economic growth to that area as well as, you know, user-friendly buildings, I think now's the time. Voice it out and we'll hear it. Mike?
No, we were just talking, because we've talked a lot about this at Tech Review. That's fine, we continue it, Town Council will be in a bit of a bind because come their second reading.
We have to stop from the beginning again.
They'll have to start with a new council. Well, we just know that three aren't running, so.
I mean, we want to try to make sure we do it correctly.
Okay.
And we don't want to just rush it out.
We have to go to.
Yeah, we just don't want to rush it out the door, but I think, you know, if people are gonna put effort into it, at least let's make an attempt rather than pushing it through.
So we clarify that for me, Amy, sorry. So we request to continue this to our next meeting in September?
Yes, September twenty-second, I would recommend.
Yep, and then the Town Council would meet when?
Well, they're scheduled for the seventeenth of September for a first.
But I mean, if we continued it, when would they postpone it to?
To their October meeting.
Which is what?
I'm not.
First reading and then they can do second reading in the same meeting?
Still.
No.
No, so first meeting would be beginning of October probably, right?
Right.
And the second meeting would be mid of October.
So there's still meeting time.
They can still make it in.
Yeah.
Do they have, let me look up their actual schedule, because I don't know how many they have in October. If they have two in October, we'd be good.
Yep.
They have October fifteenth and October twenty-ninth.
So there you go.
Okay.
Okay.
There's no delay in our board being changed or their board being changed, as long as they can make a vote at their meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So make a motion to continue the public hearing for.
Did anyone online?
Anyone online? Yep. It's funny, I can't see. Anybody online that have any questions or comments?
Can you click over to the screen that shows the attendees?
Yeah, so we are on attendees. There's only three attendees left.
Three people, right?
Yeah, these are just the panelists that are in the Franklin TV.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Yep.
All right, so make a motion to continue Crossing Neighborhood Amendments to?
Twenty-second?
September twenty-second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And our last item of business would be a zoning bylaw amendment. And our last item in business would be a zoning bylaw amendment for residential, commercial kitchens, twenty-five dash nine thirty-eight and nine thirty-nine. Make a motion to waive the reading.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Amy, if I could go to you, please, for review?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this involves, um, there's two amendments. This is to actually create a use for residential, commercial kitchens. It's more of a definition. Allowing residential homes to prepare food for retail sales off the premises. The use of the residential, commercial kitchen are only allowed in units with a private septic system. Those with the public town, public sewer town are prohibited from residential, commercial use. So this is just allowing a definition for the use of the residential, commercial kitchens.
Okay. I'll go to the board first, if I ask. Jen?
I don't have any concerns with this.
Okay.
Do we have other high B O D loads in town? Because I assume that's why the commercial kitchen has to go to the septic, because of B O D or ca, or P H.
So I, I can, the reason why we did it just for the septic was because if they were gonna do it a residential tied to a town sewer, they'd have to install an exterior grease trap. So if they're gonna do it in their own septic, they'd still have to follow the requirements with Title V, which would require that, but it's their own system that they'd have to be protecting in that sense. It's mainly, it was mainly done to dealing with the exterior grease trap requirement as opposed to anything else.
Is it possible to allow for both? And if or, put a grease trap in or put a septic in? Because for someone like me, I wouldn't wanna put a septic in, but I'd put a grease trap in.
I mean, it'd be possible, but I think one of the main reasons when they were discussing this, they wanted to limit it to just the people that were not on town sewer when it came up. I wasn't involved in the main discussions of it, but that was one of the things that because of the grease trap issue.
Perhaps we start here as a definition and.
Yeah, I'm just having a hard time with that one, like the, the B O D, because I, like I said, I assume it's for like the, the stuff that goes in commercial waste, right? So you need a grease trap, very valid, or anything else, but, you know, it seems like we're trying to restrict these to people that's off-town sewer. We're not going ahead and restricting anything else in town that's making food off the town sewer, uh, off of town sewer. And we just kinda allow them to go through a grease trap into the system and it's like much higher loads of caustics or B O D. So it seems like we're taking these little guys who have little teeny impact and making them do something that's kinda cost prohibitive. Like, if I wanted to open a home business, I'm not putting a twenty thousand dollar septic system to do it, but a grease trap at five grand or something might be doable. So it just doesn't seem like it's meeting the intent of a residential, commercial kitchen when you're telling the person that they're gonna go and spend thirty thousand dollars on a septic.
Okay. Chris?
I have similar thoughts to Jay, concerns. I think that it's extremely limiting to just those folks that are on septic and there's probably a decent amount of the community that are on town sewer that may wanna take advantage of this. And I think it's also just unnecessarily restrictive in that sense. I think the other thing too, and maybe this was my misunderstanding when this was first introduced, but I was under the assumption this was gonna be more along the lines of permitting, like standalone kitchens within a facility, so you could rent a pod.
That's separate. That was a separate bylaw amendment that we already looked at.
Oh, is that, okay, all right.
Yeah, that was separate to do in like a, yes, like in a office area or business space. So that one already went through.
Got it, okay.
This is with an actual home in a family home district.
Okay. I, I still, sir, the same sentiment as Jay in regards to why not give them the option? If it's, if it can be done, let them do it. Yeah, that's all I have.
Mark?
I don't have any comment. I mean, it's all been pretty much asked right here.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I know that if someone's adding on a bedroom and their septic's only three and they're gonna go to four, how do we determine if their septic is capable of handling this?
That would go through the Board of Health.
Okay.
They're the ones in charge of all the septic in private drinking, a lot of wells in town. So they'd have to get the permit through the Board of Health. They would evaluate it and make a determination if they need to operate it or not.
Okay. And that would be for any residential, commercial kitchen that gets installed, the Board of Health would have to get involved?
Especially where they're on septic, yes.
Okay.
So the Board of Health does have some oversight in this too.
Okay, all right.
That was one of my questions.
Can we tight tank it instead of septic? Doesn't it have to be a septic? Is that like another possibility?
Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, if I just may, Mr. Chair. This isn't so much more that someone's gonna go and put a commercial kitchen addition on their house. It's, it's for an existing use. Let's say you have a gorgeous kitchen and, and you want to sell bread at the farmer's market. You, you know, you had to be permitted to do that. This would allow someone who's on septic to cook all the bread at their house and could then go sell it off the premises somewhere else. So it's not typical that I think you're gonna find someone put a, a, a commercial ki- kitchen on, but they might have a good. We've, we've had a lot of interest in this. The people say they wanna cook all this stuff at home and they wanna go sell it somewhere, whether it's a harvest festival or farmer's market. So this, we don't have an allowed use for that right now in town. So this would allow someone to do that in their home. They could use their existing kitchen if they're on septic. They may make no changes to their kitchen and be able to do it. So that's more of the use of this, the purpose of this bylaw amendment.
But if they were to add a second kitchen, then the Board of Health would be involved?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine with me.
So the Board of Health is not involved if they're only having their residential kitchen?
If, if. I'm gonna go downstairs, I'm making hot sauce later. I'm gonna go downstairs, I'm gonna take the hot sauce thing national. I'm gonna go down and I'm gonna put a hood down there, I'm gonna put a little stove in and that's it. There's no Board of Health involved, it's just a second kitchen. I now need to feed it to a septic tank.
Right.
The Board of Health gets involved if I'm adding actual living units.
I gotcha.
Or increasing the bedrooms because it increases the load on the septic.
Correct.
Title, you wanna get into Title V, let's do it.
No, I was just a little confused, so, sorry.
I guess my only other question would be, along the same lines as the allowing for potentially a grease trap, a septic system and a tight tank, kind of the same thing? Do we have to have a septic system or can they tight tank it and then pump it out? Again, like a septic system is this big field of all this stuff and the tank is a tank that goes in the ground. They're, they're accomplishing the same thing because they're not putting the waste into the sewer system. So it just, it seems like we've done a really good job of making this very limiting.
Maybe that's the intent.
I don't think that's fair then. That I'm just a straight now.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, why just, why just, and my thought would be, if it was just septics, you're just limiting, you're just trying to cut down on how many are gonna happen. That was my thought with this. If it's just septic, they own it. It's their property. They're gonna ruin, they're gonna replace the septic system. You wanna bake and fill up your system, you own it. But on the other hand, like you said, if you have sewer, why you, why you letting one do it and not the other, I guess? That's, that's the other side of the coin. And I guess I had a question. Will, you know, will the building commissioner oversee these kitchens at some point when they're going through or in Board of Health? Because I mean, now you're cooking product, yeah, you're cooking product that you're selling now to the public. Now what fine line, you know, you don't want somebody to cook it and to have it not cooked properly and somebody gets sick. I mean, is.
But Board of Health would inspect them.
That's what my question was.
They, they will?
Well, if, if they're, if they wanna permit, they, they wanna, they wanna have a permit so they can go sell this stuff off the premises, then Board of Health has to inspect those kitchens.
Okay.
So they would have, they would have to inspect it.
All right, so.
I think, you know, I think as far as if someone wanted to install a grease trap, which to me, I think are more like thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars.
Those are the huge ones.
Yeah.
You're not gonna need a huge one for the floor of the side of the home, though.
Minimum grease trap for, based on Title V, would be a thousand gallon tank.
And we get a look at that too, as we should.
That, you get a tight, that's N S D E P. That's Title V regulations.
Yeah, but that, we're not doing on, that's for like home waste, right?
Title V for any kind of restaurant use of the size of a grease trap is based on the number of seats in a, in a facility or a minimum size of a thousand gallon tank.
I hate when we go on with Title V to crap that it's not meant for, because this is what we're doing here.
It's not, but would they, that's the thing, they wouldn't wanna install a grease trap most likely, at the, at the cost it would be.
But we could at least give them the option.
Mr. Chairman, I ask a question.
Sure.
What percentage of the town is on sewer and what percentage of the town is on septic? And typically, where are the areas in which the town is on sewer and the town's on septic? Is it specific to different parts of town or?
I, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but we did look at this. The majority of the town is on sewer and the septic systems are in the, in the more rural areas of town, obvious reasons. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head.
Go ahead, Chris. Oh, sorry.
Specific areas in town?
Yeah.
When folks that, okay, never mind, that's just my own comment.
Getting back to the, and this might be a stretch of the imagination, but if you'd had a, say, a two-bedroom home and you were gonna split it to make it a two-unit home, you're adding a second kitchen, would that require a consideration for the septic tank? So you're not adding bedrooms?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Homes are based on, is that Title V is based on bedrooms?
It's by bedroom.
That just seems foolish if we're adding, if someone, if someone were to put in a second kitchen, but we're not taking into consideration the septic tank ability to handle that, if that sounds like a problem to make.
And you're assuming that those kitchens are operating simultaneously, so.
Potentially.
But I mean, could, but.
But that becomes the homeowner's issue.
We're pointing on more of the issues of applying Title V.
If they're concerned.
Yeah, but if it fails, it's the homeowner's issue, but it also impacts the neighbors in the community.
And the Title V regulations, that does get overseen by the Board of Health. And again, that's, I mentioned it, based on the number of bedrooms in a place. So if you did have, you know, a duplex with, you know, on one septic system with, you know, two bedrooms each, or just a full family house, it'd be sized for the same thing, basically. But then there's other issues with ownership. Is it just common ownership or is it, you know, a rental unit, how that works? But at the end of the day, that's, it's, they're regulated by N S D E P and it's overseen by the Board of Health.
Could we stipulate a condition that, the same thing with the Board of Health doing a permit to make sure the kitchen's up to snuff, that they do a review of the septic? Is that something we could do as part of the permit process?
I think it would have to. Normally, even like when a building permit comes through, Board of Health is also usually on the checklist. They'll sign up in building permits to make sure it doesn't affect the existing septic system if they are on a septic. So they are involved in the process on just regular building permits.
So anyone that has one of these that wants to get a permit, the Board of Health is gonna review the permit, the stipulation, and the tank?
Yep.
Okay.
They would be involved.
This is, um, just a kind of a side note. How this came about, is we've had about a handful, less than a handful, requests of people wanting to do this. We had, you know, somebody who wanted to make bread and be able to sell it at the farmer's market. And this is how this bylaw amendment came about. So it's, you know, it's kind of a start at this point. Whether sewer regulations gets changed or capacity gets changed or something, I think this is going through E D C. This is what the conclusion was, is how it would be defined for the residential, commercial kitchens.
So they do, basically, if you get septic, you're doing it at your own risk, but what do you do with the people on sewer, though? You're, you're kinda segregating against them, that's all. I mean, if, if somebody lives close to town, they're on sewer, what, what, what right to, you know, we don't give them a right to operate like this. So I, I don't know. What do you do with the sewer side?
The town officials don't want to allow a right for, is what it came down to when we discussed putting this bylaw together. It was what, it was not recommended by staff at, at D P W and Town Hall.
Then why even bother with this bylaw?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Sure.
I think what I'm hearing is why bother with this bylaw is because at least it allows it for some people. And perhaps there's a step in the future to change it for all residents, but right now it's better than nothing. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that is a good description of it too. I think this is sort of the first step, kinda do the trial thing, just to make sure, let them do it on the septic first and seems to work out, then they can see how to bring it to the rest of the town maybe. But I think that's a good description.
So for me, I always appreciate the diversity and backgrounds of our board, because you guys brought up points that isn't something that I actually know anything about. So for me, to hear what you're saying is really helpful to understand that, you know, why not do this, do this, and then try to make it more valuable for the entire town. I don't disagree with that. And I would one hundred percent like to see that in the future, a hundred percent. I think that if you're gonna offer it for one group of people that are on septic, then you need to offer it for the rest of the town, right? Totally agree. For me, if we're going to be moving this forward, I am okay with the recommendation as it's currently submitted, because I think it's a step forward. But I do think that our recommendation should include something to the point of, we'd like to see it further expanded to the rest of the community versus just the smallest segregation of a population that would have access to septic versus sewer. Or some other changes that would allow the rest of the population to, to be able to utilize this, because I do think it is limited. But as presented, at least it's something.
Part one, part two, basically. Go ahead, Chris.
I have another interesting what-if. So Jay's on sewer, I assume, so he can't do his hot sauce business, but let's say I have septic. I'm gonna rent Jay my kitchen for two hours a weekend. Commercial home business, is that satisfied?
You can do that.
Okay. So the Board of Health should still be inspecting the septic system?
You would think.
Yeah.
Well, hot sauce will clean it.
So what they would, I just, if I can elaborate, so the, septic is for when they file, they file Title V's or any inspections that you do on a septic. As far as a residential, commercial, they would come in to make sure the commercial, that the kitchen was clean. So they don't just go and pay their, like, the town doesn't pay to have your septic inspected. It'd be, it'd become down to the homeowners to maintain their septic system if they choose to use their kitchen as a commercial kitchen. And the only time the Board of Health would get involved in that is when they need a Title V. Or they get an inspector, any inspections, just in general, if you just wanted it randomly inspected, the, the town would go out there, you'd pay your inspector and pay a fee and then we send our inspector out there. That's how that would work.
They're doing it at their own risk, is what I'm saying.
Doing it at their own risk.
But the Board of Health would be involved inspecting the kitchen.
Kitchen, but not the septic system. Because they, that's a secondary source.
Still on the Board of Health, though.
Correct, yes, yes.
Which is the key.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, all right, so what's everybody's feeling?
I'm fine with recommending with the caveat that we'd like to see accommodations made for future expansion of this bylaw to include all residents somehow.
On sewer, say?
On sewer.
Yep, okay. All in favor?
That's us.
The motion?
Close the hearing.
Yeah, that's a motion.
Close the hearing?
Huh?
Oh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to recommend the residential, commercial kitchen zoning bylaws twenty-five nine thirty-eight and twenty-five nine thirty-nine, as is, but noting in the future, it should be considered expand, should be considered to expand the bylaws to include those on sewer.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Me.
Oh, all both, sorry.
No, I'm an all.
Okay.
You have one?
I'm an all.
Jay's an all.
One or one.
There goes the, there goes the chili business.
The town screwed me before, it'll screw me again.
Uh, anybody else? Anybody have any general comments or anything? Comments, questions, no? Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.